Has got a wedding anniversary, I think I heard him say 58 years.
We ready?
Yeah, we're live.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, we have to go through a couple more things. Before we do that, we want to, we want to talk about hardship, we want to talk about special conditions and a few other things. But I'll be, I'll be very brief. The board shall not authorize any variances unless the board finds any of the following conditions exist, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in use or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other class of uses in the same zoning district. Number two, such variances are necessary for the preservation and the enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other properties in the same district and in the vicinity, and that granting such variances will not materially impair the purpose of the village ordinances or the public interest. So are there any comments by the board members regarding hardship?
Yes, Mr. Chairperson. Actually, I think the hardship and the special conditions kind of go together. You have a lot that appears to be a little narrower than some of the other lots in the area, so I think when you look at that, that does create a little bit of a hardship because obviously you want to have an addition which many of the houses in the village do have, especially as they take in parents, aging parents, and become handicapped and those kinds of issues. So I think because of the shape of the lot, it's very kind of narrow on the narrow side and very deep, that that does create a little bit of a hardship on your behalf.
Thank you. I'll just chime in a little bit more on special conditions since that is next, and they are kind of peculiar to the land, the special conditions. We do not have any utility issues on that property, which is great, you know, for safety. We can still get in and out if we had to. I don't think that, you know, ideally, if you were to redesign, it would be a little bit more choppy, I think, as opposed to the illustration that you have given us. And number three, the only other condition that I see is, is that the church is like 121 feet away, the church's driveway is about 121 feet away from your property line. But I don't really see special conditions, but I just see areas that are fall under special conditions. So the next one is the appellant's rights. Who's going to take that one? Was that you, Ed?
Yes.
Thank you.
When we look at the appellant's rights, we have to consider whether there are certain circumstances that if the variance was not granted, would deny this particular appellant the right to add an addition. Now, we're talking about an addition onto the, to the house. If it was going to be a separate building, a standalone garage or something like that, that could possibly lead to a denial because it is standalone and you just have to move it to be in compliance. But we're talking about an addition, so I think that the applicant's rights are being, have been considered, and I think we're okay there.
Can we pause for one second? I'm sorry. Mayor, are you not seeing it live? Because I'm not seeing it live anymore.
No, I'm not seeing it live.
Uh, refresh.
I did, I did. It's playing what we've already streamed.
Or it takes me to the beginning.
Sorry.
It takes me just to the beginning.
To the first half that we filmed, that's what it does.
Right, and then I take it to the end of the, of the section.
Sorry. So when we came back live, I don't know that we came back live. I'm not seeing it.
No, I'm not seeing any of it.
I even went out and back into our link on the website.
There are meetings on.
Can we continue on with the meeting?
We're not, I don't, are you able to see it?
Yeah, I'm seeing it live.
Okay. Just put your hand up if you have any comments, because I'm not getting the comment piece because I'm not seeing it.
I don't see comments.
Okay, thank you. Just let us know if we get any. I'm sorry.
So the final piece is practical difficulties, and Wayne, you want to cover that, sir?
Yeah, okay. Under practical difficulties, factors to be considered determining if a practical difficulty exists, whether the property will yield a reasonable return or there can be any beneficial use of the property without the variance. Whether the variance is substantial, will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered, or will adjoining property owners suffer a substantial detriment as a result of the variance? Will the variance adversely affect delivery of government services such as water, trash, and sewer? Did the property owner purchase the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions? Can the property owner's predicament be obviated through some other method other than a variance? And whether the spirit and intent of the zoning requirements would be observed to substantial justice be done by granting the variance?
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the variance, Mr. Owens?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Owens.
I'd like to make a motion granting the 15-foot side lot line variance to allow the addition as drawn.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
So the motion was made to grant the side lot variance of five feet?
Yes.
Which gives you 15 feet, and it was seconded by Ms. Workman. And we're going to vote on the motion. Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Ms. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The variance is passed. These, this will be approved for 90 days after the date of the appeal hearing, which is 90 days after today. Failure, you know, to apply for the necessary permits within the time period will invalidate our decision. Mr. and Mrs. Bell, I spoke to our building department assistant, Ms. Canzoni, this afternoon, and asked her if we could allow you to get your permit tomorrow, because I know how anxious you are to get started. This particular hearing needs to be reviewed by the building company that we are contracted with, and it may take a day or two before they actually put their stamp on it. So it may be till Friday?
Yeah.
Before we can get, you can come in and get your permit. So I just wanted to let you know that, and we appreciate your patience. Mr. Pike?
Will somebody notify our office when it's ready to pick up?
Is that possible?
Yes, yes, we do that. At least we'll go.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn the hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to re-adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Wayne, motion seconded by Wayne. Vote on the motion, Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Ms. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
And I vote yes, too. Hearing is adjourned at 6:48. Thank you. Plenty of time to get it.
Danny, I'm at a waiting desk. Jeff was over here. I know, but you know. Can that be too soon?
You guys want to sit somewhere different? I just put it the same way just because.
This room is a mess.
It happens. I can do that, too.
It's fine.
Did you do it up there?
I did up there already. Yeah.
Yeah, let me change those.
I did it already. I didn't know. I just got to change them. It hasn't spun.
Brian.
She's on top of it.
Yeah, the other two, I. Nice day, huh, everybody? Thought I got something for everybody, too. Not that exciting, just more papers. You thought I had a gift or something?
You thought it was chocolate.
Yeah, no.
Hi, Danny. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yes.
So I was talking to you.
Yes.
Gloria, I gave you one, right?
Yes, you did, yeah.
Okay, I need to give you one, Hannah, for these, which is, these are just stuff I have.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Where's the?
Oh.
You here to rob us? Are you here to rob us? You have the dark.
But from that single original? Okay, as long as people know that it hit that original, it'll save. You can cancel me and click here and whatever, let her rip.
Four grand was too big. Brian, you have one. Okay, great one. Now, you're just information, that's all, you know. Let's see, so who didn't get one? Mary?
No, I didn't even get it. Well, I was in the block, so I tried to get my mail.
Hopefully, maybe this will be our last one like this. Hopefully, maybe in July, we'll be able to go back to normal.
Hey.
Hey.
I'm good.
Are you sick?
No, we're just teasing the mail. We're moving down farther.
Yeah, that won't do it. You are just spacing this a little bit, John. You can pull down a little more, just.
Meeting went, the other meeting went well, huh? See? Good. People seemed happy as they were leaving. Glad they worked it out. Yeah, oh, Lord. Any flights starting up yet? You've been traveling?
Oh, yeah. I've been flying full airplanes, pretty much. It's only 20% of our schedule, but they're going to go to 50% in July.
Did they make you wear masks on the flight? I heard that's today.
Yes. We're all live?
Yeah.
That's Mr. Oliver, everybody?
Hello, Mr. Oliver.
Hey, we're live.
We'll wait for Angela to come back and... Mr. Oliver, you good? You want something to drink? Are you good? Mr. Oliver, you want something to drink?
Well, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. This was a six-year spreadsheet. That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you.
It's just information, that's all.
Where's my?
Came out of our conversation.
Did you take my other packet? Or did you leave it?
I think I just took one item out of it. It's up in front of you there, I think, Brian. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, yeah, it is.
That's right. See that? That's a little...
Okay, I'm just going to ask that everyone be clear in your mics today because for minutes purposes, Katie did not have time to bring the recorder, so she's, they're going to take them off of the YouTube feed. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
This mic is missing. I just used that one, but...
Yeah, use the one closest to you.
I guess the distancing, is that it?
Yeah, we've redone some things.
That's just strange.
We're in a same...
I like the cardboard, baby mask, by the way.
It was an accident.
There you go. Okay, everybody ready? Seven o'clock. Like to welcome everybody to the council caucus for the council meeting of Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. We'll start the council caucus at 7:00 PM. Just for everybody's information, this meeting is being livestreamed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We are following substitute House Bill 197 provisions that relate to public meetings and hearings during the COVID-19 pandemic. Like to welcome everybody tonight, and everybody, our residents and anybody else watching our meeting tonight. Yep, having our caucus and now having two COW meetings, we'd like to take the time in this caucus to go over the legislation. Most of the legislation that is on here is housekeeping, things we normally do at this time of the year. Angelo will be able to touch base on quite a few of the things to do with the budget. Some of them, as we go through, you'll see have to do with the COVID-19 pandemic, such as item number C, which is important to us. And then the other item is, of course, the reappointment of Wade Johansson to the zoning, which I did send you an email and stuff just to get that out there to, you know, get some discussion, thinking about that since we've been talking about that. So I guess we can start with...
If I may, for one minute. I'm not seeing chat turned on. Are you seeing chat on your side?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay, we need to have the chat feature on. I know I had some other link from Kevin in my email, but we can't keep going without the chat feature.
That means the public can participate?
Right, that means they can participate, right.
Chairman? We're just waiting, in case anybody's watching, just to make sure that the interactive chat feature on YouTube is working. So if anybody wants to...
Should be good.
No, here on the, uh, live feature, you can assign another one.
Okay, hold on. I'm going to get this new one now. He sent me one, but I'm not on my own laptop, so that's not here. That's what I'm trying to figure out, how easily that, like, obviously you can see us live here, but residents need to be able to get to the correct one. I can see this one, I just don't have chat on this one. Let me see if I got it to this email. I have to run back and write my link down.
Are you seeing the correct one?
No. I see the one that says live, which when I was in it before, I can see us live, but when I'm in it, I have no chat feature. It says chat's disabled.
Okay, he's going to email you, um, the video.
Okay, give me a minute. Sorry, everyone, we're on the mic. I'm not, I got to go to mine, email them right now. For me? Sorry.
So it didn't go, we were under the assumption it was going to go right from one, you know, follow in the meeting, go right from one link to the other.
Yeah, Karen said, oh, that's what that, the email is on the way so she can get it.
Okay. So how would we get it? How will the...
He changed the description on the first one he did.
Okay.
And now the...
So how will the residents, how will we get it to the residents right now?
Oh, we have the dead bird in the pen.
Who can we get it?
Can I hear it still or no?
No, they can't, they can't hear anything, they don't see anything.
Oh.
Just tell them there's a massive volume.
Karen, will that still see it?
The only issue is them commenting.
Let me try, maybe I have to update my, or refresh it.
Dance, but I'm trying to figure out. Are you able to type? Do you have the link? Or do you need me to bring it to you? Like, we're going to need to type it in for the residents to know. They have to go to a different one.
Karen said it'll be a link in the description for the residents to follow through.
Okay. Break that in completely.
We can't use the...
I'm accessing it just like the residents would, so that's why.
Can't use the BGA link to...
No. It's a different link.
Did you see it?
It's not it. That's funny. You know what? He says there's going to be one linking in for them, but...
Oh, yeah.
What he gave me has taken me to a totally different thing, unless I need an underscore in here. I guess let's try that. There we go.
Yep.
And we're good. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, good.
I'm, so they should see it now also. I would, like, the residents should be able to see it now.
Okay, let me try, let me try on ours, because I'd be like a resident.
Go ahead. There's a little delay in it, cropping up there.
Did you see the comment?
Yes.
You know, I didn't look to see if we, I got it now. It is good.
We're good, yeah.
I just went in, you know, built it on YouTube, and it's there.
Comments are on, we're good.
Okay. Is it, did it record what we said already? Or do we need to start the meeting from the beginning?
It probably recorded, we just were refreshed to catch it. It's up to you.
Okay, well, why don't I, I'll just start it instead. That way, we're covered on it. Okay. Well, we have technical difficulties, just like everything else. So we'll have another take here, like movie stars or something, so apologize for that. Just want to welcome everybody to the Village of Walton Hills Council Caucus. If this is redundant, we just want to make sure we're not missing everything and residents are able to participate and see everything that we're doing here. Like to welcome everybody to the council caucus meeting of Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 at 7:10 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We are following substitute bill 197 provisions that relate to public meetings and hearings during the COVID-19 pandemic. Like to welcome everybody here. We'll start with the legislation. No, that's for the, that's for the council meeting. First piece of legislation, John, do you want to read it?
Sure. It's ordinance number 2020 dash four, authorizing all actions necessary to apply and accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council energized community grants in the village and declaring an emergency.
What this is, this is the NOPEC grant that we apply for every year. We've used it for different things in the past. Rob has used it to update lighting, different things, so we're basically applying and accepting it with that piece of legislation. Did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I could add, the amount of the grant is $8,552 for 2020, and we will be putting our application in tomorrow, most likely. Deadline is June 30th. They moved deadlines this year, and that's it.
Any questions on that?
Angela, you said the deadline on that is June 30th?
Yeah, our profile deadline is June 30th, and then the actual application deadline will be October 31st, and so monies will be received later in the year.
Okay.
You know, and with that said, I want to let, I know we might have talked about it, so it might be a little redundant, but we, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we haven't had our, our two council meetings, just talking to everybody last meeting and throughout, you know, we felt a lot of these things are housekeeping, so we could do it by getting the legislation, seeing it, talking about it in caucus. We are aware there were certain things that we felt needed, I mean, we discussed everything, needed a lot more discussion. We probably would either put it on for first reading or wait till we can get back to normal or schedule, if we were in this situation, schedule a COW meeting or a longer caucus. But I know a lot of these things are, like the grant, you know, accepting the resolution for the CARES Act, there, there are things that are kind of, you know, housekeeping matters or things that we certainly want to move forward with and apply for any, any free money out there and stuff. So I just kind of wanted to say that we certainly, myself and this board, certainly don't want to ever think we avoid discussions, because that's certainly not the case, so. If anybody wants to add anything to that.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have to pass all this by emergency hour, it goes, right?
If, if that's what you would like, yes. The, maybe the appointment would be something, they don't have any meetings coming up, thing we'd probably, I would like to make that appointment and pass it today, but I think that would be the only thing. The other items, yes.
You mean the Johansson appointment?
Yes. The other items do have deadlines on it, and they have dates on it.
Sure.
Who would like to introduce that? First, Gloria, for suspension? Is everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sure. All right, John, item B?
Resolution 2020 dash 10, adopting the tax budget of the village for the fiscal year 2021, directing that the same be submitted to the fiscal office of the county and declaring an emergency.
Angela, I'll let you talk about that.
Um, each year, we adopt a draft of what our tax budget will be, which allows for the county to certify what our assets are, and that helps with property taxes coming in, as well as tells the county how we're going to allocate out those property taxes, and also if we would need to make any amendments to our, our regular budget down the road, this allows them to know that where our revenue sources are. So this is a time of year we do it every year, we need to get it to the county by July 23rd.
Correct. Anybody have any questions on that?
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, if Angela would, for the benefit of the residents, I know we see the, these papers here, but the big schedule two, if you could just review what some of these mean, we have all of our, our funds listed here, and just like the totals from the beginning unencumbered balance and the ending unencumbered balance, and what those mean.
Sure, so within here, Katie puts the tax budget together, and these beginning estimates are what we've got unencumbered to start. So like, when you look in the general fund, we've got, you know, 600,000 in there, that's part of that is, you know, from our notes and the timing of the budget. When you see in the next column, property taxes and local government revenue, that kind of ties back to that first, first schedule that you all have, that shows we've got police pension money coming in and our property tax revenues, since we had added the inside village. We now have the additional 546 coming in. And the rest of this particular spreadsheet are actually kind of formulas, so when we get to the estimated ending unencumbered balances, it's kind of taking what we had in the beginning, what we're getting from the county, or expecting to get from the county, what we're asking for, and then adding in to our total resources, less anything we're going to have encumbered. So those, column six, where we have total estimated expenditures and encumbrances are things that we plan to spend on, capital improvements, obviously, would be our streets, our bond retirement that we do each year, those are our big ones. Police pensions that we pay out for them for OPNF, and then all of our main things out of the general fund. So, so that's kind of how the numbers calculate out. What other questions you have?
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just about the beginning estimated unencumbered, unencumbered fund balance. Uh, that's $1,351,638. That is that, that's the actual number, correct?
This is an estimate that we put together, and part of that is based on what I anticipate we're going to have in income tax revenue in addition to the other little revenues that come in throughout the year for us as well.
And then the ending, which would be December 31st, correct?
So this budget is for 2021.
I'm sorry, yeah, just, uh, 2021. And that ending balance is $1,263,427, what your estimate is.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor Collograft, uh, members of council, Angela. Yeah, I, you know, for a first-year councilperson, uh, trying to, trying to really grasp the tax budget. Of course, I have questions. And, and my, I guess my first question is, um, historically, the tax budget that's submitted, uh, how realistic is it toward the actual budget that will be adopted in, uh, in January? And the reason I ask that question is, especially on the capital improvement line. I like to see the $2,022,397 that are, um, in the others, other source receipts anticipated for 2021. And is that a realistic?
What's going to go into that number is going to be a lot of what we're going to get back in, in grant money, like for the county project at Dunham, um, and what we'll receive, um, OPWC and NRSD toward some of our road projects.
All right, so, so between now, once we adopt this tax budget, but between now and 2021, council will see, we will see all of those anticipated projects that add up to this.
By the end of 2021, yes, we should see.
December, 2020.
Right, because this budget is for next year.
Exactly.
Right.
So, so in, in order to produce a budget for 20, a real budget, adopt the budget for 2021, will we see those list of potential projects that, that drive this estimate?
We shouldn't have a good, a good handle on most of them, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. And then the other question is, on the, um, the special bond retirement fund, uh, you know, how realistic is that number of?
It's very realistic. We have been taking just about that same amount each year. This last year we took a little bit less. Um, we retired more and took a little bit less. So that is, that is, that is pretty realistic, to what we've done the past couple of years.
All right, so my, my question, my concern for that is the, uh, the two, the two projects that we have this year. The Dunham Road Project is 704,000, and then the other 50,000 of, um, road repair program that was not budgeted for in 2020. And whether or not, at the end of the year, will, will any of that, uh, will we have to increase the special bond retirement fund?
So Katie and I keep going back and forth about that. It's all going to be a timing issue. We renew our bond each year in November. And so depending on the completion of the project, we may be able to roll our costs into our bond we're going to renew right away. If we do have to take another bond, because we have to pay it prior to renewing our yearly bond, we would, it would be a short term, and then we could pay it down and add it into the new, the new regular bond.
So in essence, we, we think we would have a, somewhere between now and the end of the year, we will have 754,000 dollars that we didn't budget for in 2020.
Well, we would absolutely be able to roll it back into the new bond. So we only have to take a little bit ahead for short term, and then roll it into the new bond for, and we will also be getting our reimbursement back on our portion as well.
So the new bond number may change before?
The new bond number could change, but the timing on that just so happens that we want to add it into that. But we may also have the funding to go ahead and pay for our portion, and we may see the reimbursement from the county all in time, and it may never have to hit the bonds. So. It's all going to be a very close matter of timing, because I know that project, I think, is starting in August, so.
704 is not being reimbursed. That's, that's the bottom line. 704 is not being reimbursed. That still comes from the village coffers, one way or the other.
It does, absolutely. Yeah, and we're hoping timing lines up and the stars line up for us to just go ahead and do it without a second bond.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, you know, the years we've been doing this, uh, when it comes time to do our annual budget for following year, when we start talking about that in October, November, and December, we really don't look at this.
No.
This sheet, this is an estimate now, based on what we know, correct?
Yes.
Based on our best, best guess. But then when we're doing that, when we're actually doing next year's budget, it could be different than this.
We're looking at where we're at at the time in, in our, in our financial situation. Like, we'll go to date when we start doing our budget for the end of the year. We'll, we'll be using real-time numbers on where we're at with everything for expenses and revenues for the year.
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're not encumbered to make this.
No, this is more informative for the county themselves, so that they know here's, here's where they're coming up with their money, between police pension, property taxes, income taxes. Here's how they plan to allocate it to their major funds. Um, so that they can say, all right, we understand, or they can ask questions and say, where are you coming up with all that money? You know, how could it be different? Right.
All right, because I was, I was thinking this might be our quote-unquote summer reading, uh, planning document for, you know, for, for the budget, the real budget for 2021.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions related to that?
Do you want me to introduce it, Mayor?
Would you like to introduce that then?
Sure.
Okay, great. Force suspension?
That's 2020 dash 10.
Correct. Force suspension.
Yeah.
Everybody good with that? Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Angela, could we just have this changed in the bottom corner of every one of these? It says, uh, 2014 budget.
It says, on what, on the budget pages?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll look back at Katie's document and do that.
Especially if those are the ones.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, she's going off a master when she creates it, so that's probably why it's down there. No problem. I'll, I'll see if we can get that.
Just so it doesn't go to the county like that. Yeah.
You got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions related to that, to resolution 2020 dash 10? Anything from, uh, the residents, Angela?
Nothing yet from the residents.
Okay. Just want to let you know, residents, this is our council caucus. If you have any questions related to the, um, ordinances that we're talking about, uh, the, the agenda there, don't hesitate to type them in, and, uh, we'll be glad to answer them. We'll keep moving on. Mr. Montello?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2020 11, to accept federal funding from the CARES Act through Senate Bill 310 for reimbursement of expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic that were not accounted for in our, our previously adopted budget for the 2020 fiscal year and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, go ahead, Angela. You can speak to that, and I.
So this money, though, obviously, we've all been following along, and I know you are all aware that we were able to get federal funding that was handed down to the states and the counties and some larger cities. And so the way our county is broken down, Walton Hills is scheduled to receive $23,606 as our portion. We will need to submit expenses. Um, they're going to distribute that through our local government fund in the next couple of weeks, which is why we have legislation now. And they played around with legislation, so we could have probably, we've done it sooner. But, um, they gave us our final legislation. We're doing, going to have that now. The refunding will come in a couple of weeks. And then we have until the end of the year to go ahead and keep submitting our things that we've spent money on that were COVID-related. And then anything that is unused at the end of the year, if there is anything unused, we would actually return to the county. To date, our expenditures for COVID-related expenses are $7,768.43. So we may come very close to using that entire 23,000, depending on how many more meetings we need to have like this, how much more. You know, we're going to keep disinfecting the rest of the year, so we know we're going to have product and PPE and things like that continuous. Any questions?
Mayor Collograft?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce this.
Okay.
All right.
No problem. Force suspension, Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Very good. Okay, Mr. Montello, item D?
2020 dash 12 is a resolution authorizing the village to take any actions necessary to apply for a diesel mitigation trust fund grant from the Ohio EPA, uh, and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to her a little bit, Angela, and you can. This is, as you know, um, Rob's been talking about, you know, and we all have, all of us here in council, about a lot of Rob's equipment, not Rob's equipment, but the service, the Village of Walton Hills Service Department equipment. And they do a great job up there. Our mechanic and our guys have taken care of it well and maintaining it well, but it's aging. Um, so, um, this is a grant that he talked to us, I know he did talk to us a couple of times when he was here, about, uh, applying for this grant. It's a reimbursement grant. I, I'll let Angela talk a little more of the numbers on it. Um, but it is for, uh, updating your vehicles to clean diesel vehicles. And, um, if we were to get that, uh, it's a 75% reimbursement grant, which means it would pay up to 75%.
Sure.
There's a total amount on it, and then we would pay the rest. But this is just applying for the grant, the reimbursement grant. It would only be if we used it, then we'd get reimbursed. If we don't use it, that's fine too. So it's another one of those housekeeping things that we should do. It's a good opportunity. We're hoping it's. Brandon, we have applied before, and we haven't been, uh, I don't.
We were not selected last time. I think we needed a little more info in our grant paperwork. Um, should we receive the grant, uh, Rob said they will know, December 2020, we'll know. That'll be a word notice, but August 7th is the deadline for application. So again, that's why we're kind of putting this out right now. Um, we would do more legislation to accept it down the road if we need to. It would be, um, it's, he's applying for $400,000, up to 75% of that to be reimbursed, and it can be spread over two years. So it, we currently have two dump trucks. We could replace one in one year, one in the next, so that we're not coming up with all of that money at one time. Um, and right now, the way the grant works is that it's best to go ahead and ask for more ahead, um, and then maybe get that whole amount or a little bit less. So Rob's had, um, George Germin, our mechanic, actually did a webinar and has filled out everything and is ready to go to be able to finish our application if we approve our legislation.
So it's, uh, tells you some of the efficiency and stuff in the, in the Service Department. They're looking to save money and, and, you know, like all the departments. So, so it's a, it's a good thing. Hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed and we'll be awarded the grant, and, uh, we can look at those dump trucks, because we do know, uh, they're certainly needed. But it'd be nice if, uh, we didn't have to pay 75% of it. It'd be a deal. So.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just think it's important for the residents to know, because it's called a diesel mitigation trust fund, that this is sponsored by the Ohio EPA, and it's in order to replace diesel trucks with new, clean, and alternative fuels.
Correct.
So I think that's a very good environmental thing that our residents should realize also.
And this partnership the EPA has is with folks, but I do, that's who actually puts this grant together for the EPA.
I'd like to introduce that, Mayor.
Okay.
I could.
Mr. Schutzenangel? Force suspension?
Yes, sir.
Is everybody good with that? Okay. Any questions, uh, from the residents related to that, or any, any of the other items? Have anybody let you know they do, they are seeing us?
I don't have anybody chiming in like usual to say they're on. I had chat from, I'll see here internally, and so far, I'm not, I'm not missing any chats, right? I got, yeah.
Okay. Well, if anybody's on, you can just say hello, and that's not a bad thing either. At least we know.
Somebody's out there.
I know, uh, Mr. Oliver has chucked it too, but, um, we welcome hellos too, so. But if anybody has any questions, well, we'll, okay, we'll move on, uh, to the last piece of legislation there, Mr. Montello?
Yes, sir. 2020 dash 13, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Wayne Johansson as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Village of Walton Hills and declaring an emergency. I believe it's due to expire his term pursuant.
Yes. Um, Council, as you know, I sent you the, the letter he sent us, and, um, also sent an email. Uh, Wayne, Wayne is in his first term. Uh, this, this would be his second term, if, if, you know, being appointed. I did talk to the chairman of the committee, and he highly recommends him. And, uh, I thought that was important. And, um, just observing and, and knowing Wayne's done a great job over his term, and I would like to reappoint him and ask for your, uh, support and confirmation on that tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce that.
Okay, Mayor, can I introduce that? Force suspension?
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller? Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Any other questions relating to that or comments?
Mayor, I would just say, you know, this, this is going to be our busier season for the boards coming up through the summer. So if you would pass it on a, you know, emergency, that would be good, because a lot of things are happening in the village.
That's correct. They, they had a zoning board meeting, uh, right, uh, before this meeting. Uh, the residents, if you never have been to a zoning board meeting and you'd like to, to witness one, and there was one, uh, tonight. We did have another one that was YouTube two last month. Any questions related to tonight's agenda? Otherwise, can I ask for adjournment of the council caucus meeting of Tuesday, June 16, 2020?
Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to adjourn the council caucus meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Second. I'll let you take that.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Terlowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Council caucus adjourned at 7:34. We'll, uh, type up those caucus minutes, and then we'll be right back to the residents. We'll finish our meeting in a few minutes. Okay, okay.
If it's okay with everyone, I don't, we don't have a caucus agenda. We'll, yeah, I'll type them up tomorrow and get them out. We can approve them at the next.
We'll approve them at the next. Make a note of that. Okay. Is everybody, and, and Mr. Montello, we're okay, um, passing them at the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody ready to start the council meeting?
Yep.
Everybody good? Okay. Like to welcome everybody to the regular council meeting of the Village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, June 16, 2020, at 7:35 PM. This meeting is being live streamed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We are following the Substitute House Bill 197 provisions that relate to public meetings and hearings during the COVID-19 pandemic. Like to welcome all the residents, council. Like to, uh, oh, I already called to order. I guess our next thing is pledge of allegiance, item two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three. Like to take a moment of silence to acknowledge our deceased residents. Carol Pla, Mary Zabel, Albert Zach, and Rose Firm, Firm. I'd also ask that we pray for all our healthcare workers, our first responders, and our country. Thank you, everybody. Roll call.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilwoman Linville?
Present.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Whedon?
Yes, here.
Councilwoman Spitznagle?
Here.
All of council present, along with our tax administrator accountant, Angela Revere, and our loss loser, John Montella. Yes. Item five, we'll move to the next council meeting. Any comments related to tonight's agenda?
We're on nothing yet. We're only on thirty seconds.
Okay, so we'll wait.
We can give it a minute.
Mayor, do we know, have a count how many people are watching?
First of all, do you see how many are watching? Because I always get a low count. I've only got five, but you probably have more than I. We'll figure it out. This time, they were way ahead of me.
Beautiful day out.
No comments, yeah.
Okay. We'll wait a few more minutes, and if there's no comments, then we'll move on to the mayor's report. If any comments come up during the legislation, we can answer them at that time, too. So residents, if you do have any comments, feel free, as we move through, to type it in, and we will try to answer that. I'll do the mayor's report at this time. For the month of May, the Walton Hills Police Department issued eighty citations. The predominant violation was speeding, with twenty-six citations, followed by fifteen citations written for driving under suspension, and five citations for traffic control lights. Okay. Mayor's court for the month of May was three thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents. Year-to-date, seventy-five thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Last year-to-date was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirteen cents. So we're down due to not having our court dates, but we're starting to catch up. We already had our first, I think it was June fourth was our first court date, and we do have, is it this Thursday?
Yes.
This Thursday, we have the court date. So court has resumed. So that's where we're at with that. Any council comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a Recreation Department report. Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, you can do that, or you can do it at the end of our new or old business. It's up to you, Gloria. Okay.
Hey, Mayor, there's been no call for defunding our police, has there?
No, we haven't talked about that or haven't received anything from anybody relating to that.
Okay. I think that's one of the silliest things I've ever heard in my life, by the way, as an opinion being offered. I can't believe somebody would do that. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Any other council comments at this time?
Could you excuse me a minute? There was a death in my family. My brother's been trying to call me three times.
Oh, Mary.
I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, just go ahead, sure. That's a gig, Mary.
Well, residents, we're going to wait a few minutes. Mary Brenner, our council president, just excused herself for a couple of minutes. We're just going to see. She comes back and just hope everything's fine, so... Just take a moment and see. Any comments?
No comments, yeah.
You, we should be...
We're good. I'm getting his comments.
Okay, okay, okay. And yours would be the same, okay. Good.
We want Gloria to give her report now, perhaps, to save some time when she comes.
You okay, Mary? You need to excuse yourself?
Yeah, I guess somebody needs another number to call, another family member, and so, but, so...
If you need to.
Thank you.
I'm sure everybody understands. We're glad it's... Okay, back to any council comments? Okay, well, we'll go right into the legislation now, and then if anybody comes up, resident or anything, just let us know, Angela, and then we can comment at that time.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce for suspension ordinance twenty twenty dash four, an ordinance authorizing all action necessary to apply and accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPIC, energized community grants in the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Did you, Gloria, did you say for suspension?
I said for suspension.
Second by Mr. Linville.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty, oh.
Mr. Mayor?
Gloria.
I'd like to ask for adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty dash four.
Second.
Second by Mr. Linville.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash four, passed. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Spitz, no, Mr. Linville?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce for suspension Resolution twenty twenty dash ten, a resolution adopting the tax budget of the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio, for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one, directing that the same be submitted to the fiscal officer of Khyber County and declaring an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary, second by Mary Brenner Miller?
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of Resolution twenty twenty dash ten.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spitznagle.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty dash ten, passed. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Whedon?
Mayor Colgraf, members of council, I'd like to introduce for suspension Resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, a resolution to accept federal funding from the CARES Act through Senate Bill three-ten for reimbursement of expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic that were not accounted for in the previously adopted budget for the twenty twenty fiscal year and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by Mr. Linville?
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Mr. Whedon?
Mayor Colgraf, members of council, I ask for the approval for adoption of Resolution twenty twenty dash eleven.
Second.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, passed. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Spitznagle?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask for suspension on Resolution twenty twenty dash twelve, a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to apply for the diesel mitigation trust fund grant from the Ohio, the Ohio EPA in the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by Jim Allen.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask for adoption of Resolution twenty twenty dash twelve.
Second.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Okay, twenty twenty dash twelve, passed. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce for suspension Resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Wayne Johansson as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Village of Walton Hills and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whedon?
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen.
There's a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spitznagle.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, passed. Thank you, everybody. I will swear Mr. Johansson in probably either this week or next week. Any comments from residents or anything?
No resident comments.
Okay. We have old and new business. I know we talked a little bit whether or not we want to recess for July and August. That would be, we just need, would need a motion, correct, John? I think just a motion.
Yes, sir.
Like we have in the past. I know there's things that we have to get done as far as planning, so there probably definitely would be some Planning Commission meetings, maybe some zoning. As of right now, I don't see anything for legislation unless, you know, some of the Planning Commission things, like the coroner, the Smith and Obe might need legislation if planning, you know, approves that the lot split and stuff, and then the sale would come to us. So, I mean, it could, you know, I, it doesn't, it's up to council here. We could do like we have in the past. We recess, and then if we had to have a special meeting, we could have a special meeting.
Sure.
Or special meetings. And what we would do is I would try, you know, call everybody and try to make sure we can accommodate everybody, you know. So that would be up, up to everybody. If you'd like to do that. We've kind of been going in that direction for the last few months due to the pandemic. We've tried to stick to our days, but, you know, I'll be glad, and I'm sure everybody here will, we get back to our regular meetings and get back to some, some normalcy. So I don't know how you feel, if you want to talk about that or just leave it the way it is. And, like, we can leave it the way it is, and we can, you know, cancel them or have them as we move forward, too. You know, we have a few options there. You know, I do feel this. I appreciate our residents and everybody involved understanding, you know, how we've been operating due to the pandemic. The employees have been great. The residents have been great. You guys have been great. It's just, you know, we're all in it together, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have basically just taken care of all necessary legislation through August, right? So unless something like really weird came in.
Correct. I guess the only thing that I would see if something came out of zoning that we, not zoning, planning, that we would want to do right away or something, but then we could, we could have a special council meeting for that, too, you know. So, yeah, no, I, these were all housekeeping things. They had deadlines needing to be done. Good things for the village. So I have, I would support, you know, I have no problem. It'd be up to you guys. You know, I support, we support each other.
Mayor Colgraf?
Yes.
The only concern I still have is the Dunham Road project and the timing for that project getting bid and awarded in order to, for that project to potentially, or hopefully, get completed in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, you know, and not carry over into the winter of twenty twenty-one. That's the one piece of legislation that sticks in my head. You know, we're still getting resident concerns about patching that road, and, you know, we're holding them off from patching, telling them that it's going to be repaved. So that's the one piece of legislation that's out there that, that's of concern for me.
If I may, too, that was earmarked for post-six-twenty in our legislation, so...
Correct. But we're hoping the, the date is, you know, it was supposed to be July the second. We're hoping it's going to be August here. That's what we're hearing. I know, I've talked to some of you about that, and I'm waiting to pin Joe down, but that would be one of those items that we would probably have to have a special council meeting on.
Yeah.
It wouldn't probably be, I don't know if we need a lot of discussion on it. We pretty much already approved it. It would be just awarding a contractor, awarding a bid. Usually, we take, we take the lowest bid, and we take the suggestion from our engineer. So that, you're correct, Gloria, that would be one of those items that we might get, get the call on, you know.
Sure.
So...
But, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The timing on that just depends on when the bids are closed, correct? And we have all of that gone through by the engineer, so...
Yes.
I mean, even if we had regular meetings, that could still end up being a special meeting in and of itself.
Correct, correct, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I, I fully agree with doing that, you know, making the motion for July and August, because, you know, any kind of need, such as Dunham Road, we would just call and have a meeting. Hopefully, we've taken care of all the business, you know, the current business, and if something comes up, we'll get a phone call. How does everyone else do?
I'm fine with that, Mayor, and...
I second that.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, they need us to call us.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody would need to make a motion.
Okay, I'll, should I do it now? Or do we?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to have a recess of council meetings through July and August two thousand twenty, unless a special meeting is needed.
Second.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trelowski?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, and so because of that, we'll probably have three COW meetings and two council meetings.
Yeah. When was that, two summers ago, something like that?
But I hope that, I hope things continue to go well for us here in Walton Hills and surrounding areas in the state here. Okay, we still are under other business. Gloria, did you want to give your report now?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Recreation Department report for July of twenty twenty. The village is having a retirement reception for Carol Stanosik on Thursday, July ninth, from four to seven P.M. at the Community Events Center. All village...
All village residents and employees are invited to attend. Please join us as we thank Carol for 15 years of dedicated service. Yoga has resumed again weekly on Wednesdays at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Events Center. Our senior lunch will be on Monday, July 27th, at 11:15. We are hoping to have our senior lunch at the events center, but at the very least, we will continue to have the drive-through lunch. Carol's Bookworms Book Club will also resume on Monday, July 27th, monthly at 7:00 p.m. If you have any questions, please contact the Rec Department. The annual village garage sale has been rescheduled for Thursday, August 13th through Saturday, August 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Please mail or drop off a check for $17 made out to the Village of Walton Hills no later than Monday, August 10th, at the Village Hall. If you need, if you are in need of transportation or a mask, please contact the Recreation Department at 440-786-2964 for more information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Gloria. Excuse me, and I'll add just a little bit to that. Our Parker program did start up. We have been following the CDC guidelines. The only thing that changed this year, we didn't have the four to six-year-olds. The administration felt that was a group they had some concerns with. But we really hope to bring that back next year. And talking to Carleen today, the program's gone well and it's going well. And I know a lot of the residents were happy that we started, you know, that the program's taken place. There's changes in it. They missed the lake. They're not able to go down the lake two weeks, so they're finding other, you know, other things to do. Of course, the hygiene and the cleaning of the equipment. But it's going, it's going well. And that's a good thing. The kids are having a good time and that's the main goal and stuff. So, any other, any other council, anybody else?
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you expand on that for residents a little bit on, like, when the Parker program is going on? We don't want anybody else, that area is closed off? And then what's the status, current status of TG Young Park? I know that's been some question.
Right. And I know, we talked about it. Some residents have talked about it. Gloria, myself, Ray, I know Lisa. What, during the day right now, with, when the Parkers are there, we've had, we have had residents come up there with their kids and wanted to, you know, get on the swings. And at this time, the Rec Department has decided, you know, has said, can you please come back when they leave it at 4:00? And the reason is of the cleaning and the cross contamination and having the kids with the mask. And we're reviewing that. I talked to Carleen today, have been talking to Natalie. It's not something, Carleen says all the parents have been great. They've understood and she's given them the reasons why. But after that, after they're gone, the park is opened up. But they're going to review that. We're talking about that, if there's other ways to address it or maybe manage it so everybody could participate. You know, and Carleen said everybody's been very good and it's just, you know, it's kind of uncharted water and we certainly aren't there to upset anybody or anything. We're looking at how to do it. We're just looking at the safety of the children and the children up there. The bathrooms have been locked after they leave, too. And we're talking about that, too, about opening them up. And, you know, normally, we open them up during the day, even on the weekends, and then the police lock them at night. Right now, they're locked, you know, after the Parker program is done. So we're going to talk about that. I talked to Carleen today and myself, her, Natalie Buck, and the chief. We're going to talk about that and look at some of the guidelines and see. The goal is, we want to have everybody enjoy that park as much as possible, just like everybody on council here. But at the same time, you know, we want to make sure we're doing things right and protecting everybody's health and safety. And so I think we're going to, I'm hoping that we're going to open things up here soon and stuff. But just to be honest with you, we're talking about it right now. So far, it's gone, gone well and everybody's understood. But we're aware, and so is Carleen and Natalie. Nobody wants to tell anybody they certainly can't go on the swings or do any of that. We want to tell them, yes, you can. So, so we're going to review that and look at that and hopefully come up with something that works for everybody. I'll keep you updated on that and let everybody know how that's going.
Thank you.
But that's where we're at right now with that. We want to open up the bathrooms. I know at one time, we had the bathrooms closed because of vandalism and stuff. We haven't had that in the last couple of years. Just let everybody know our police go up there and monitor it well. And we have other ways of monitoring, so nobody certainly, we'll catch anybody that does that. So that's not our reason. It's more or less been for the sanitation of the bathrooms. So, you know, some of it might come down to, you know, you use it and you take personal responsibility and that's where a lot of the parks are going with, you know, good hygiene for all. Wash your hands when you start. Wash your hands when you're done. Don't touch your face. So we're reviewing it. So we're hoping, we're very happy our parks open. Carleen shared with me that even some of the residents, as she asked, come back and said, well, we're glad you're even open. A lot of parks are completely shut down and they're not opening up at all. And so I'm very happy that we are open along with everybody here that has supported it because we all know our children need that and ourselves, we all need that well-being, being outside and maybe just sitting on a swing set and swinging and just enjoying the beautiful air and the sky and stuff. So, so we're all on the same page there. But I'll keep everybody posted on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, or, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'd like to see the bathrooms open until dusk just because of proper hand washing. And if people are taking their kids up there, at the very least, washing their hands when they leave, you know, and stuff. I think it's almost counterproductive to have them closed off after the Parker program, so.
Yeah, that is, that is correct as you are given the option to wash hands there, too. Gloria?
Yes, I had a question about the lake. I know they were not going to fill the lake with the water, but have they, what are their thoughts now about opening the lake for picnicking? You know, that part? Have they talked about anything like that?
Just in conversation I have with some of the trustees, I think they're having a meeting. I think it might be this week or whatever to talk about that. I don't really know exactly where, what direction they're going. If I were to hear something, I'll let you know. We certainly miss it.
Yes.
We all know that and we knew that. But we do understand. Anything else? I have a couple of things, unless anybody else has anything.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, on my walk, route that I take, it's been for like four straight mornings now, that I see a bicycle laying off the road on Walton before you get to Conley Hicks area, okay? And I think the bike's been stolen, frankly. And somebody just dumped it there and they haven't noticed it. So I don't know if the police would investigate that.
Yeah, I'll let the chief know and...
Would you refer that to them?
Yes. Between him and Rob, they'll, they'll take a look. The police will knock on the door, make sure it's just not left on the side.
I can't imagine a kid just dumping his bike and leaving it there. Because those are really prized. And it's sort of cross-gender, too, the color, if you will.
Right.
So you can't really tell if it's a boy or a girl's bike.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I'll, as the chief. Somebody might be happy getting their bike returned, too.
Yeah, I would think so.
For old and new business here, I just want to let everybody know. Yesterday, myself as Safety Director, Ray, Weeden, our council member as Safety Chairman, and our Police Chief, Stan Jaworski, we met at 3:00 yesterday. Boy, Ray, I think our, our meeting turned it away. Almost a marathon. I think we were together, what, three hours, Ray?
Two, three hours, two and a half.
And we reviewed our policies and procedures relating to our police officers, relating to their use of force, their bias-free policing and on other related policies. Our policies and procedures are reviewed and approved by the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board, which is part of the Ohio Department of Public Safety. Right now, we are currently up to date and compliant. So I just wanted to let you know that. We talked about a number of things with the chief about him talking and sharing things with his officers. And I think, and I'm happy to say that I think we're doing the right things. But like anything, there's always room for improvement. And the chief and his department are always looking for those ways to improve how they operate, for the safety of them, for the safety of anybody they were to pull over or come in contact with. So I just kind of wanted to share that. Ray, I didn't, don't know if you wanted to share anything out of our meeting yesterday?
Yes, Mayor Caldera, members of council, if I may. Yeah, it was a very good, very good meeting with Police Chief. And I want to give a little background to the Ohio Collaborative Law Enforcement Agency Certification Program. Excuse me. Back in 2014, there was a national effort, national effort on policing in the 21st century under the President Barack Obama administration. And some police agencies around the country adopted that, those policies, and started their own kind of certification and revamping. And then the state of Ohio, around the same time, in late 2014, put together a task force to look at policing and a volunteer certification program came out of that. So that's where the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board and Law Enforcement Agency Reece Certification Program came up. So a couple of things I'll talk about. There's like eight or seven, seven different areas that that certification program covers. Use of force, policy, recruitment and hiring, community engagement, body-worn cameras, bias-free policing. That's new. That will be in the new recertification piece. And an investigation of employee misconduct. So our police department got on board early. They got on board and they're already certified under the Ohio program. Now, all police departments in Ohio have not volunteered to go through this process. It's a lot of paperwork. It's a lot of time involved. There's four standards I want to call to your attention of each of these areas that they have to focus on. There's four standards that have to be met. One is the policy and the procedure. Knowledge and awareness, meaning reading of the policy for each individual in the department and signing off on these policies. Then there's a proficiency piece, meaning on roll call, there are various training and quizzes for the officers. And then the last standard is a compliance piece, agency activity and accountability. And that kind of ties into the, some of the data that the mayor shared with us today. Because on the accountability piece under the bias-free policing element, there's a section that calls for data demographics or demographic data as it relates to stops or citations and detentions. So that's part of what that information you have the mayor share with us today. He went back four years, or six years?
Six years.
Six years. It kind of showed what that data looks like. So that's part of that bias-free policing. So that's new. There will be, you know, have to be training for that piece as well as some of the other pieces. So again, I want to say that our police chief, and I'm not sure when Chief Jaworski came on, but our guys got certified in 2017 or 2018. I'm not exactly sure. And now are undergoing a process for recertification. So our guys are, you know, are leaders. Our police department, our police chief are leaders in this area because every, again, every police department have not adopted this voluntary certification. So whatever comes out in 2020 from, whether the federal level or others, in terms of taking a look at police departments, Walton Hills is already ahead of the game.
With that said, one of those papers, I think, Jennifer, you asked me, it was just kind of showed, it didn't have a lot of, it just showed that both, that were certified. And it showed some other communities, you know. So that piece, we were talking about, that our governor, Governor DeWine, mentioned that, this program and it's something that office is strongly urging. All departments should be certified in that. Thank you, Ray, for sharing that.
Yeah, thank you, Ray. Good information.
Too. But, and with that said, too, we have also, you know, with our partner in HR, Lori Sprague, as you know, a lot of us, hopefully everybody's or is close to completing their class. All our employees for some, you know, related to being compliant with the workplace environment as far as sexual harassment and other things. So we are also talking about having a class soon here relating to diversity and inclusion. And so our partners in HR will begin with us soon. We're trying to, you know, I talked to the staff and some of you on council. We'd like to have it with groups instead of virtual. We just feel that sometimes you get a little more out of it when you can ask questions with people instead of just going through a routine thing. Even though I thought the one program we just went through was a very good presentation and a good program when you had to take a test. So that's, that's something that should be coming soon, too. Any other questions? Any questions from any residents related to anything?
No, I have no questions.
Does anybody else have anything related to a meeting tonight or anything to share? Comment on Carol's retirement? We're hoping that we can have that party. A comment on Carol's retirement, we're hoping that we can have that party. I know we put it off a couple of times due to the COVID-19 pandemic, so we hope that we can have it where people can come and, and wish Carol a happy retirement. Uh, and it will be like Gloria mentioned, at the event center that day. And I, I think otherwise, we're...
Do you have top five?
Um, I, I think we're good. I mean, does anybody, Angela was just saying she does have, uh, our finance report here, if anybody wanted any questions on that before we adjourned, and of course, you're always welcome to, uh, get that at any time too.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to tell Angela or Angela and Katie, whoever, what combination it may be, I do appreciate the fund summary from May of last year.
Oh, from last year? I thought I'd give that.
Yeah, for comparison.
I can actually give a, a little synopsis for everybody too, of kind of where we're at, if you'd like. Um, when you look at our current fund summary, we have a fabulous unincumbered fund balance right now compared to last year, um, but some of the places where we have changes, our, our revenue is down this year compared to last, and mainly that's the general fund due to income tax deadline being extended. We are currently down, we've not been down since I took over, I'll just state that. So right now, COVID's killing me here, but our tax revenues, yes, every time I go to my meetings, they're like, how's your revenue up? Because I'm entering everything as quick as I can. So we are currently down about sixteen and a half percent, which equates to about $384,000 in tax revenue, which obviously we anticipate to have with the deadline coming up. So hopefully by fall, we catch back up there. Mayor's court, obviously, you'll notice, is a big hit and building bonds, because we really did not have people doing much with, um, home improvements and coming for permits and registrations or any major building bonds during the time that we've been closed down. Um, we do have higher expenditures as well, obviously, and that's mainly our capital improvements and street repairs. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that, um, I think that overall, though, we're still gonna be in a really good position. I've got some money to apply toward our Northfield Alexander, um, PO that's out there, because we paid aggressive, and we got some more money back now from OPWC, so that's another $55,000 to our, to our good, that I would be applying, um, tomorrow. So if you have questions, you can always obviously reach out to me personally. Um, and I can do a comparison every month if you want and just send you that summary page. Um, I'm obviously a proponent of not killing trees, so I will get all of you the updated, um, other reports as well electronically, and I, as I stated in the email, the actual figures you see from me on the reports per month are not gonna change, those came directly from the accounting system, it's just that budget Katie and I were playing with some numbers that were just inadvertently put in as last year's ending balances, like they just were not accurately filled in where they needed to be. So nothing changes, which, it's just we end in the red at about $2,600 versus the $500 in the hole that I showed us the last couple of months. So I'll get those to you.
This is, uh, and Mayor?
Yes?
This is showing the last page, 2020...
Your general fund?
Actual, I'm on the very last page.
That one, okay.
Deficit, 271,000.
Right, so month-to-date, we're in a deficit position there, as far as...
Oh, you're doing month-to-date?
Well, yeah, so month-to-date, year-to-date for now, we're in a deficit position as far as the entire general fund. But overall, our cash balance is stronger than last year, so it'll pick up again once we are balanced out with taxes coming in and COVID dying out hopefully, you know, when we're back to normal, taxes are a big portion of...
Yeah, and we're still projected to be at the end of the year ahead by $2,600.
Yes, we should hopefully still have the year in the black, maybe even better than that, I hope, but we'll see. Um, I can tell you that we just got, um, uh, disbursement from the auditor of state for gasoline access tax, or auto registration, one of the two, and it's really only been a cou- it's only about a couple thousand less than we normally get, those are one of the areas they figured things would get hit as we start getting our new distributions. Um, so, so far, so good, we're not so bad for, for our distributions, we're not, we're not seeing, you know, a, a major decrease in what's coming to us from the state or the county yet. So I don't know if that'll straggle into the couple of months from now maybe, but I'll keep, I'm keeping my eye on those things too.
Just having some conversations with some of the businesses, I know Smith and Alby they're back up to 100%.
Yes.
Um, Integral, never, never, they were, they've been, they've never had any furloughs or reduction in staff, they, they stayed completely through. Um, so we've been very fortunate, most of our businesses are, you know, have been essential in, in operating.
They have. Our withholding taxes have been pretty steady, I've been keeping my eye on that as well to see who may have shut down for April, um, and it seems as though most of our companies, um, that are, are larger, top 10, um, were pretty status quo the whole time, so that's great. The bulk of our tax that we're waiting on is net profit individual returns to come in, so.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, we do have a, a, a couple vacant, uh, buildings in the, in the industrial district. And it's my understanding that the phase two of the federal stimulus program is, part of that is, uh, redoing the tax structure to make it more beneficial for companies to produce in the U.S. So, uh, I'm sure, uh, our economic developer is going to be on that. Um, he's, uh, very good at that stuff. And, uh, trying to get businesses to fill those, those, uh, empty buildings that we have, the few that we do have. We don't have as many as some people would think we have, but there are, there are a few in the village, and hopefully that stimulus package will be good for us.
Um, that is correct. Um, just to share a little bit, um, because I know, if, there's always the question of the Ford plant and stuff, um, myself and, and Mr. Jordan separately, um, haven't talked to Ford, we've talked to, uh, the broker, uh, for Ford, and, um, still feels very good about our corner there, and we hope to see maybe some closure there before the end of the year. So just to kind of keep that on a very good, positive note, I, you know. Um, with that said, I know people might say, well, Mayor, you've said that before the end of 2019, and, and that is true, um, but I'm gonna be very optimistic. Uh, uh, we all felt we were going in a very good direction, we were hoping it was going to something take place there before spring of this year, as Jennifer, myself, and Tom have talked, but, um, due to the pandemic, uh, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic, things have changed a little bit, um, and slowed the movement down, but now it seems to be picking back up, so, um, let's hope good things happen there. Um, because that's, as we know, very important to the village, same thing with the Arhouse property too. And that gets a lot, you know, Tom answers a lot of questions to that, uh, talks to a lot of, uh, interested parties on that, you know, because it's, it's a very nice building. Just kind of find somebody who has the right, you know, who wants it and has the right use. Uh, Jennifer, I don't, did you want to comment on anything about, anything to do with that? What I, that one sheet I gave, or just leave that alone, or?
Yeah.
That's up to you, it's...
Um, Mr. Jordan, our economic developer, had reached out, um, that Purell was looking for an expansion in Ohio. And unfortunately, the two biggest contenders, um, of properties in the village are Arhouse and Ford. Arhouse is too small of a facility for what they're looking to expand to do for production, and Ford is way too big of a facility, so, unfortunately, but it does show that Tom has been actively and still currently, you know, keeping track of and reaching out for other businesses to come into the village and stuff. It's just unfortunately, we were not a perfect fit for Purell with that.
Right, our current properties that we have did not fit their site parameters, um, unfortunately, but that's how real estate is, you know, when people come in, they look for a certain type of building to fit their needs, their size, uh, but that's why we, we have a nice big property and we want a big company, or, or something, uh, or a large development, so.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just reiterate what you had said, with the COVID-19 and the Ford property, it's great news that we're still looking at projecting at the end of the year, possibly in closing, because we are not privy to the nature of the business that's looking to possibly purchase Ford. So we don't know how much, how much this COVID pandemic has affected them and their current status, but it is very exciting to me that they have not said, you know, it's not going to happen, so, I'm very optimistic.
That's, that's exactly, uh, how I feel about it, and, uh, good things are gonna happen for our village, good things are gonna happen for the state, happen for the country, Okay, anybody have any other, anything else to share? We wanna thank everybody, we'll be, we'll be in, uh, contact as always, uh, keep everybody updated, uh, everybody have a nice summer. I'm sure we'll see each other, we're definitely all gonna have a different summer, uh, but hopefully, the weather will be nice and, uh, we'll have a good summer and stuff. Anybody else have any comments before I ask for a adjournment? Thank you, residents, uh, thank you for understanding, and everybody, uh, out there, I guess, YouTube land, have a nice summer from council, the village, the staff, myself, so. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the council meeting of June 16th, 2020.
Second.
Mr. Weedon?
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Linville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Turlowski?
Yes.
Councilman Weedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Meeting, the regular council meeting of Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, adjourned at 8:28 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Anybody going out to kitchen, or is everybody kind of just hanging out?
I'll be here.
Yeah.
I've had vacation last week, well, basically, first week of July, we don't know what we're doing.
Yeah.
We're going somewhere, it's gonna be, like, right.
Right.
I know a lot of people are doing like the one-take trips or just, you know, going to cabins or maybe, you know.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's not going to work as a man.